Says live on YouTube and recording.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the first ever virtual meeting of the Oregon City Schools Board of Education. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. This moment of silence tonight is for Sherri Walters, our sixth grade teacher from Eisenhower, E.J. Gilliland, the son of Nola, and John Gilliland, who were longtime employees of Oregon City Schools, and Charles Neal, the band director at Clay. So we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Fruth?
Yes. Mr. Shea?
Present.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Molnar?
Here.
And Mr. Zawiski?
Here.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
So I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
Item five on the agenda, the treasures report.
All right. Hopefully, you were able to get the information off the shared Google Drive. I also put up the minutes from our finance committee that was held this week. Some minor adjustments, obviously, with the finances. The true cash comparisons are, the good news is, real estate taxes were in a little bit overestimates due to the new valuations, and also, there was a large settlement of delinquencies. So this was before the pandemic set in. The property tax allocation is down. Last year, we received our homestead enroll back settlement in March, and this year, we didn't receive it till April 16th. So that's the largest adjustment. Overall, our income is down 2.8%, and our expenditures are up 3.4%. Some items that, well, it's not really good news, but some savings that are going to be coming down through, one of the items we'll be saving on, I looked into, we obviously aren't having any substitute teachers. That's going to save us a good $315,000 now that we know we're not coming back. There'll probably be some additional ones if you think about fuel on our buses and some things like that. So we'll be adjusting the budgets appropriately, but I just want you aware of that. Our supply spending is actually lower because of everybody at home. We aren't really sitting out much. Tonight, on the agenda, we also have acceptance of rates from Lucas County. Those are, of course, after the valuations have been agreed to, they establish the rates everybody will be taxed at. The estimates for this year for receipts for the district are a little bit higher, which is good, primarily due to personal property utility, utility taxes. Another thing within Finance Committee, it's my recommendation that we at least flatten the supply budgets for next year. I think we need to be concerned. We're on the cap, I think, well, pending dropping enrollment, I believe our revenue stream should be fairly stable, but I do worry about other ways because they're telling all the state budgets, all the state departments to reduce their budgets by about 20%. So I can't believe that that will impact us in some ways. This is one time, I think the schools that are really going to be hurting are, if you were collecting an income tax from your community, that would be tough, and we are not at this point. Just a note, medical insurance rates are, this is the time we look at renewal. Initial estimates aren't very good, but we work with a good broker, so hopefully, we can work through that and come up with a workable solution. Still haven't heard back from Mr. Beasley about the National Gas Plant, if it's full steam ahead, or if we're gonna, if it's gonna happen yet before June 30th, or if we're gonna need to push that into the future. Next month is our five-year forecast, so there'll be more details about where we think we are. We'll also know if the levy has passed or did not pass at that time, so we'll have a real solid look at that. The one thing else, I think Mr. Zawiski in the meeting, at the meeting questioned other savings through personal service, which is a real good point. So we're looking through those to see if we can save anything. And Dean might have more of an update, but the breakfast and lunch room, breakfast and lunches we are serving. Now, last week, we sold, we provided 8,000. I believe this week was it actually 9,000 meals you guys prepared and gave out? We're not losing money on this, but we're not making money. We're very fortunate. Our lunchroom does have strong cash balances. We're very, so we are, we're not gonna have to transfer money from the general fund to cover the lunchroom, but those are the highlights of what's going on. Unless you have questions, that would be my report tonight. The big thing will be, of course, the five-year forecast update will be next month. And Hal and I'll have to look, we're looking at some potential reductions, which we planned on, whether the levy passed or not. We need to start looking at that, especially in the current client, climate.
Jane, do I have a motion to accept, please?
Move. Second.
Discussion? Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item six, the consent agenda items. Are there any items that the board, the members of the board should pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items. May I have a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr.? Mrs. Miller, I'm sorry. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. The item is the North Point Educational Service Center contract. We need a motion to approve that contract for $500,000. It covers a preschool teacher and aide, itinerant preschool services, preschool service assessment, OTPT and APE services, district educational manager interpreter services, and a preschool supervisor. May I have a motion, please? A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item B, the OOSBA policy service, we need a motion to renew that agreement to provide a web-based policy service at the cost of $1,575. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Kennedy? Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item C, we need a motion to approve the following donations from the Oregon City Schools. Number one, the Mercy Health Center at St. Charles. It was gloves, disinfectant wipe, spray, hand sanitizer, and mask. And number two, to the Lucas County Commissioners, hand sanitizer wipes and another small container wipes. May I have a motion, please?
So I'll move.
Second? Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. And on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Molnar. Obviously, the last four or five weeks have been something that none of us had ever lived through or had ever tried to lead through. I just want to start by thanking as many people as I can. All, certainly, all our employees and our teaching staff and our support staff. But as we all know, education's really extended itself throughout our community with all our families and all the extended families and the grandparents and all the people that are now involved with the education of our children. And it's been something that's going to transform, I think, how we do business moving forward for quite some time. You know, there's been a lot of positives that come out of it, and I think we're all learning a whole lot about doing things a little bit differently. So anyways, I just wanted to give the community a big thank you, and certainly, all of you as the board for allowing me and my team to kind of just make some real quick snap decisions that we've had to make throughout this. Hopefully, we'll have a little more time to make decisions moving forward as we begin to plan for next year. So I don't know if you have my update in front of you, but I just want to do kind of a rundown of some of the hot button activity items and give you an update as of at least tonight, where we're at with those. Most of them are high school focused because that's where most of the activities are left. Graduation is probably the number one item that we want to get nailed down here as quickly as possible. You know, we kind of held on to the notion that we might be able to bring people back in at Seagate Center. We had the May 31st original scheduled date. We have a backup date for June 20th. But I think we're really moving beyond that to something that's going to be uniquely different. Like, most districts are looking at something that probably won't involve a mass gathering of some kind. So we're going to take a look at maybe doing some kind of online, you know, graduation along with possibly utilizing our drive-in theater. And we have some ideas, but what I'm going to commit to you tonight isn't the exact idea, but we'll have a couple of decisions or a couple of ideas to you by May 1st, and that will let the seniors and their families know by May 1st exactly what graduation looks like. There's all kinds of ideas floating out there. I speak with superintendents from around the area. There's a lot of unique, really cool ideas. Many are just going to a virtual. Many are doing cars. Genoa is seriously looking at doing the drive-in theater or kind of the local area. So it's gonna be all kinds of ideas on this. We know all families and kids are gonna have all kinds of ideas on this, but it has to be manageable. It has to be safe. It has to be meaningful, and we're gonna try to do everything we can to make it as personalized and special for families as we possibly can. So I don't know if you have any questions?
Do you think May 1st is enough time for you to make that decision?
Yeah. Oh, you mean in terms of what?
Well, you said you're gonna have a decision by May 1st. Does that, you think that's enough time for you guys to, with the governor rollout, his phase plan of reopening and what you can do?
Yep. I really do. I had a good conversation with Mr. Jerski today. We talked through a lot of scenarios, and we do need to put a stake in the ground for our families. And to be honest with you, if we just continue to, like we originally thought, and many districts thought, if we just keep pushing it back into July, we're gonna lose a lot of our families wanting to participate, just as the natural course of summer, and we really don't know what July's gonna look like. If we do something virtually or something in connection with the drive-in theater or something like that, we might be able to even do it as soon as our original scheduled date of May 31st. So again, I'm not making any promises tonight, but I'm giving you the most up-to-date information that I have. And we're gonna work very hard to put a stake in the ground, have a plan, and have it ready to go by May 1st, which is a Friday. Moving on, Clay Prom will be officially canceled. I guess this is the first, we're gonna put out an email tomorrow to all the folks. That's something, again, we held on to, wanting to provide that experience for kids. With that being said, the prom committee is going to look for alternative activities that might be able to be done working with the kids. There's, Mr. Jerski shared with me probably 10 different ideas to do something. And maybe, but it won't be, it won't be a dance, you know, it won't be an in-area prom. It's gonna be something, obviously, with social distancing, and something that the kids want to do. But again, the traditional prom that we had scheduled is canceled for this year. Another one is Clay Honors Night. That one was also rescheduled. That is also canceled. We know there's a lot of awards that go on with those kids, and we were, you know, we will make sure that all those kids get their awards. We will distribute it to them. There's a couple of ways we could do that. It might be at graduation. It might be through another means. Clay Scholarship Night, they are looking right now to do a virtual Clay Scholarship Night where those who give the scholarships might be able to do a short video or something to honor the kids. So we are working through that. I don't have any more details on that, but it is the plan to have some kind of virtual scholarship program. Clay National Honor Society, the banquet or the night that we typically do is canceled. There's just really no way that we can continue to do that under our parameters. But they are going to be holding a recognition event in the fall for those juniors that have been inducted this year. There'll be seniors, obviously, but do something in the fall to honor those folks. And then, obviously, if everything goes to plan, then the spring will be the typical National Honor Society. You know, it's funny, we hadn't thought about this, but each year, Mr. Jerski's been doing the senior handprints on the wall on the second floor there at Clay, and many kids have been bringing that up to him. How are we gonna put our handprint on the wall? And so we're hoping to do that in conjunction with however we coordinate or Clay graduation. If we, you know, one of the options is to bring kids in, take a picture with them in their cap and gown, put a virtual graduation together. We might be able to do that senior handprint along the same lines or that same day in a safe way. So we're, we're working on that. Clay Operation Graduation is canceled. Well, it typically was scheduled to be a YMCA overnight swim. That's not gonna happen, obviously, so they're looking at doing something. The parent, a group of parents run that, so they're gonna work with Mr. Jerski. So those are all the Clay events that, that we talked about. Are any questions about the Clay events?
Yeah, a couple, just a couple of quick things. When you talk about some of this stuff being virtual, is it like what we're doing here with a couple of people that would announce the scholarships and then being streamed on YouTube? Very similar to what we're doing right now?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a program or a package that our photographer, or I'm sorry, our Jostens, who we get the graduation gowns and get everything from, have put together a, like a five-part graduation package using Zoom, just like we're doing tonight. But with that, it's, it's, it's a lot more structured. It will allow for the kids to do, for example, we could show videos of the, of the class speakers, and we could show individuals based on, you know, having a picture of every kid and do a little bit of a bio about every student. We could have a, when, at the end, when we do the tassel switch, there's a mechanism to have that happen. There's a mechanism to do the pop and circumstances when we walk in and all those things. So it's all tied together in a package that Jostens has put together. If we did that, maybe in conjunction with taking our, our seniors to a place, like the drive-in or a large parking lot, and then maybe show graduation on a large screen or something like that. That's, that's where our mindset is right now. It could change, but that's what we're thinking. And then, as many people could tune in and watch as possible when we, when we present this graduation. So again, I don't have the very specific details. That's why I'm giving ourselves another week and a half to work out details. But many districts are going to this. We're certainly not the first. But it's gonna be the safest for all our kids.
Okay, then, I've had a lot of people ask about the senior graduation signs. I know they usually get out at graduation. Some districts are getting them out earlier just so people can see them and stuff. Is there any way we might be able to distribute those before graduation?
Yeah, I'll have to follow up on that. That's one thing we did not talk about today, so I'll follow up on the graduation signs, yes.
Last thing, not related to that, but I know you're talking about some trips. I've been contacted by several of the eighth-grade parents that the address on the Scholastic Travel Refund Form that was emailed out was incorrect, and a lot of them have been sent back and returned through the mail.
For the DC trip?
Yeah, so I don't know if Cory or Paul, someone can maybe follow up, make sure. I've had like four people ask me about a new address, and I don't know anything to tell, but they've gotten sent back in the mail to them.
Yep. I'll definitely, if that's been an issue, I'll get that clarified right away tomorrow.
I think, that's all I got.
And then, one last thing about trips. Been in contact with Mr. Kudzal just regarding the Disney trip and the refund process for the Disney ban trip that we were to take. And essentially, it's a holding pattern until Disney reopens. The travel company cannot get the refund from Disney. So as soon as Disney reopens and they assume like normal operations, then the refunds will flow to the travel company. The travel company will then distribute the refund to the ban boosters, and then the ban boosters will distribute to the individual families. So that's, that's roughly how the flow will go. But we're at the mercy of Disney right now, from what I understand.
Is there a potential for juniors or the underclassmen who, if, are they considering doing a trip next year or not? One of the questions was, can they keep that money when it's refunded to the students in a fund for the student for a potential future trip? And just keep that in account for the student as opposed to refunding it to the families?
Yeah, that's the, I have not heard any discussions about a trip for next year. I think that's maybe a little bit too far out for people to think about, but I will find out. That's, I don't know. Jane, do you have anything maybe to add on that? I'm not sure exactly how that would work.
Oh, it's completely with the boosters. This trip does not come through our books at all. I see no reason why it couldn't be done that way. It would be able to be done that way in our books, but that's the boosters.
All right, thank you.
So I'll follow up on that, Mrs. Miller. Okay, moving on, obviously, we continue to have a levy on the ballot. We have put out information about the process with absentee. We'll continue to do that for each of the next two weeks. Not really sure when we will actually get the results. I'm guessing it might not be till the end of that first week in May, given the timelines and accounts. So I don't know if there's any, anything anybody wants to mention about the levy. There was, I did not see the final, but I did do an interview today with Channel 13, so there was something at the, around the five o'clock hour on the levy. But my message to the community about the levy is, listen, it's very much needed. But individuals have to make their own, obviously, voting choice, and certainly, the circumstances are very rough for families right now, and, you know, just navigating through the voting process can be difficult. If there's anything we can do to help, we certainly will. We can certainly provide the absentee ballot applications, help people in any way if they want to reach out. Jane mentioned earlier, I am anticipating, we are anticipating hard times ahead. Heard, heard, you know, just a number today from a state consultant that they were actually looking at cutting all budgets by two to two and a half percent this year. Don't know any, anything formal or official. That was all hearsay in a, in a video chat that I attended, but it just lends itself to the idea that there are people in the state of Ohio that are talking about reductions this year, and who that affects, I'm not sure. And Jane mentioned that, you know, the 20% numbers being thrown around quite a bit for the upcoming years. And again, you know, I don't want to overreact or underreact to this situation, but Jane and I and Dean will be meeting at the end of this week, taking some serious looks at the budgets, areas that we can look at, and reductions, and freezes, those types of things, and certainly, share those with you. Kindergarten registration, we have tentatively planned to start officially May 4th, that, that Monday, kind of when Phase 1 starts. It's going to be a similar process to what we have done in the past, but it's going to be less contact with individuals. So parents will first need to go online and fill out the new student registration, which can be done from anywhere. Two, they will have to get us their documents, their proof of residency, custody, and all those things. You know, they can either drop it off, email it, or mail it. And then, when we receive that, we will schedule an appointment with the families via phone or video chat if they so choose, and answer any other questions, and set up anything we would need to set up. That's, in a sense, what it's like. We have some challenges, though. We did a lot of registering help and support for individuals who just really didn't understand the online part, but we brought them into our office. So we're gonna have to think through and talk through how we want to handle that support. Because right now, we're not planning on bringing everyone into our office, especially this time. But know that, if you get questions, we're gonna have it start May 4th. We're gonna put an ad in the press paper. We certainly will put it out on all our channels to get the word out. We're already receiving lots of calls, as you can expect, for kindergarten. Any questions on that? And just last but not least, a real positive thing. I got word a couple of days ago, Tricia Soltes, principal at Star, Heather Armstrong, our STEAM teacher at Star, were both accepted to participate in the Batel Innovative Leaders Institute, which is kind of a year-long training, if you will, on behalf of Star Elementary and with the goal of becoming a, a STEM school, you know, an official STEM school. So they thought that this training would give them certainly more information, more leadership, more skills to take their school in that direction. So I wanted to, I guess, share that with you and congratulate them publicly on that. They were very excited. It was an application process, and they were notified early last week. So very proud of those guys. With that, Mrs. Molnar, I'll entertain questions for...
Questions? Mr. Kennedy? Mrs. Miller? Mr. Shea?
No question.
Mr. Zawiski? Looks like you're golden.
Good, thank you.
Item A, food service. The Oregon City Schools are currently compliant with the standards of SB 210, governing the types of food and beverages sold on school premises. On to old business, we have all these policies. Most of them were just changes in words. The big policies that require changes won't be until next month for their first reading, and those have to do with graduation requirements changing again and teacher evaluations. But those will be next month. We wanted to make sure we had all our ducks in a row before we put those on any agenda. So with that, I need a motion for the acceptance of these policies. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Discussion?
All right, Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes. Item B, a resolution.
Can I interrupt real quick? I'm sorry. Real, real quick, I just wanted to make mention, you mentioned the graduation policy. Right now, our graduation credit requirements are 21. And of those 21, there are six elective credits. The state minimum is five elective credits. Right now, in discussions that I've had with Mr. Jerski and their team, we are, we are going to be recommending that we go down to the 20 elective credits. So I just wanted to put that bug in the air. We'll get you more information as to rationale why. I mean, the rationale why is, it's just been our local decision to have students take one extra credit. Many districts, given the, given this particular situation we're in, are looking at those minimum credits. And so I just wanted to kind of share that with you, and I mean, if there's certainly opposition, we do not have to do this. And I mean, if there's certainly opposition, we do not have to do this. It's just something that will be coming down as a recommendation.
There are several, several things to be changed with that.
Yeah, there's other language things, but in terms of core credits from the state of Ohio, 20 is the mandated number.
Right. Thank you. Okay, we have, item B, a resolution, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission. I need a motion for that resolution.
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Okay, I got Mr. Kennedy for the motion.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? Your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then we have Board Committee Reports, Finance.
Finance Committee met last week. As both Hal and Jane talked about, we talked about some of the savings that are coming from the pandemic. And Jane trying to update the five-year forecast to get us where we're at. We know we're going to have savings in the subpay, fuel, supplies, possible utilities. So we're trying to get a handle on all that stuff, so we can update the five-year forecast. We also talked a little bit about what to possibly expect from enrollment moving forward. Mike kind of brought up, you might see a lot of people moving or maybe looking to online schooling, knowing that we've done it now for two months, and it might be something they can do moving forward. Or there's also the other side, we could see an increase in enrollment just because people wanting to get to a district that have good remote learning and tech support and computers for every student. So I'm not really sure which way that's going to go, but just something that we need to consider as we move through and kind of look at the enrollment. And the last thing, Jane, I might need your input on this. I know we talked about some of the student fees and stuff, refunds.
Yeah.
Since they started the, I mean, what would we, is it a prorated portion we're looking at giving back and stuff? Or is it just anyone that paid spring sport fees or different ones?
Okay, we're trying to pull this together. In fact, we're probably going to discuss this a little more, because the high school is the most difficult. We've got, well, we have people who paid for prom. And we want to put them together as much as we can, so we weren't cutting checks for each separate, you know, fee. We've got the spring sport fees that need to be refunded, prom. We had some people that paid for, oh, excuse me, the, to take the courses for getting out of advanced placement, you know, then you get out of some college courses. So we have those. So we're looking at that now. We will try to consolidate them, so we send them out. We also made a comment that if it's a hardship for people to have their lunch balances carried over, for instance, if you have a junior on down, if you have a hardship, we will refund that to you. So, but, but we need a little time, so we pull these together. There's talk of, I have no idea how we're going to do the compute, get the computers back. I know we talk at Facet, you know, if we put them in envelopes for when they bring their computers back, if they're going to bring them back. So we need to talk through that. But yes, we will be refunding sports fees and things that did not happen. We have to.
Will the parents have the option to have it credited to the student account and applied towards, you know, this coming year's fees? Or do you plan to any check out to everyone?
Truthfully, we would prefer that with as many as possible, instead of printing out all these checks. But it, I don't know how we're going to ask them. We need to work through the process. I'm sorry, I'm not sure how we'll ask every parent, would you prefer, you know? You know, for instance, most lunch balances, unless there's a family need, oh my gosh, what happened? Unless there's a family need, we will just leave them and carry them forward. They'll be there for next year. If there are people that have younger children in the system and they'd like that, you know, we'll take emails, anything that notify us. I just don't know that we're going to have a formal system. We have to talk about that tomorrow. All good questions, Jeff, but we hadn't quite gotten there. Yeah, today I just found out prom's officially canceled. So we had to find out what the plan was, you know, for the rest of the school year, before we get this refunding going back.
And Jeff, we'll work to put a clear communication out on that, because I've been getting those same types of questions on refunds. And not just here in my superintendent's talk today, it was a topic on their agenda as well, because same thing. So.
I would think that you just make the statement that they'll be credited to your student's account. And if you'd rather have a check cut contact, then Jane can put out an email or a phone for them to contact.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. I just, you know, but then was pointed out, you know, I was like ready to roll with that. And then I thought, wait a minute, then the seniors that don't have anybody in there. You know, so it's just, people have different preferences. And we do have people that want that, do not want a lunch balance. They need the money now. Things have gotten tough for them. So.
And that's it from the Finance Committee update.
Thank you, Mr. Zaviski. Capital Improvement, Health and Safety.
We did not meet. Dean did reply, give us a report. Essentially, the only thing we're really discussing was the athletic storage building. Obviously, due to the COVID-19, everything has been put on pause. We're okay, as long as I think we resume by mid-July for the foundation to sit there. So, you know, based on what the governor's stating, I'm guessing they'll be able to resume construction on that athletic storage building, probably sometime in June. And then he sent us a real nice piece, which I think most of you already talked about, just in the incredible work that our maintenance staff is doing in conjunction with our teachers, administrators, and food service providers, and providing over 30,000 meals to date, which is just absolutely incredible. So kudos to all.
Employees as well as volunteers.
Volunteers, sorry, I did, okay. The parents as well, since I am one with two kids at home that have now become homeschoolers. I realize how difficult you guys have it right now.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so onto policy personnel, we had three resignations that we will be filling. We started hiring substitutes for next year. And then next month, we'll have the movement of teachers, where we had the enrollment fluctuations, where we had a bigger fifth grade, and we have to move on and eliminate, not eliminate, but move one teacher to another grade. Academic?
We did not meet. Obviously, we're just going to keep doing remote learning throughout the rest of the year. Thank you to all the teachers. And to Dawn and Deb, how awesome they have been throughout this process and made it really, you know, they've stepped up to the plate and made it easy for our kids to learn remotely. And it's just been really neat to be able to see the interaction with the teachers and emails back and forth, you know, even with my kid at home. They check in, they make sure if they've got questions, you know, that they're available. And it's been fairly simple, from my standpoint, you know, of watching them learn. We've got various levels for my house. I've got two in the university and one at the high school. And so watching our level of learning be at the same level as the universities has been incredible. So I just want to say thank you to all the teachers who have done an incredible job and continued in this difficult time. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Thank you. Legislative?
I believe everyone in the community is watching TV every night. And I think our legislation is changing daily with this COVID problem. We did not have a meeting, but just keep your eyes on the news media and listen to and follow Hal's communications that he sends out. And I think anything legislative changing for students and our parents will be covered rather regularly.
Thank you, thank you. Board discussion, what do we have? Mr. Zaviski?
Just got two things. Like I said, in the past, I've been somewhat critical at times, but I do want to give him kudos on his communication. Anytime the governor has an update, his communication's been quick and concise. It's not as long or flowery or creative, but it's to the point, and it gets everything out to the parents. And so I appreciate that, really, the timeliness, conciseness. And my other one, I know we're going to be looking at how to grade. I think K through 8 kind of came out with a statement. But if we change anything grade-wise, does that require, is that a change in policy that would take board approval?
Well, I think if we, you know, if we do something that changes the grading percentages, those types of things, I think it would be something that needs to come to the board for approval. Right now, I mean, we really are grading 9 through 12. And when I say grading, you know, using the same grade scale, allowing teachers their individual, I guess, flexibility to do great assignments. So.
Well, I ask it because one of the communities said they're taking a request to the board to approve a change in policy or change in grading. I know K through 8, if it's pass/fail, is a change. And I didn't know if grading like that was a board policy or not. That would have to be officially approved.
And I know pass/fail tracks. Yeah, pass/fail is in our policy. It's also in our handbooks. It's been something we've used at different times, mainly with students with special needs. It's been something that we've done pretty regularly. But I'll check with our legal. I've not heard too many districts taking their grading back to the board, unless they've done something completely different. I've heard more about if the calendar were to change, or if there was anything like that 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 needed to do. But I can look into it right now. I don't believe there's anything that the board needs to approve that we can't do or haven't already been doing already. But I'll look into it, Jeff, and make sure that we're not going against any piece of the policy, for sure.
All right, thanks. That's all I had.
I would like to, I would like to thank our administrative team, our teachers, and our students and our whole district I'm pulling together to get us through this. I am just so impressed with the emails and the communication that's going on, the phone calls, the letters that I'm getting from people. I believe everyone is pitched in. Our teachers are doing a great job. Our administrative team is getting things finished. I see the neat things on the news media all the time with TV Channel 13 and 11. It's just so impressive to be a part of this. And I'd like to thank all of you for the extra hard work, because I know all of you are reaching out much, much harder than what you expected to do this year. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Kennedy, anything? Mrs. Miller? I would, I would like to say thank you for the show of support for our seniors last night with the stadium lights and the lights on up and down, up and down my street, anyway. I assume everybody else too, because senior year's kind of been, unfortunately, not what the students expected. But I think we've shown good support for them. Anything else for the good of the board? Do we need an executive session? Anyone? Nope. Okay, then, special meeting, I don't know of any, but May 19th is our next regular board meeting. I'm assuming it will be done in the same way, like YouTube separated, like the Brady Bunch. And that's all I have. So may I have a motion to call the meeting closed? Second? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller? Mr. Zaviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Thank you. Be safe, everyone. Yep, thank you, everyone. This went well. Good job.